Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Bakovic.
Here.
Verhaelen.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Kuzikowski.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, folks. Item three is the approval of minutes of December 6th, 2016, and December 9th, 2016.
Kurkowski may make a motion to approve the minutes of December 6th, 2016, and December 9th, 2016. Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Under recognition, item four is a consideration of resolution number 11778-122016, a resolution of appreciation to David M. Sorum, retiring utility service worker. And I'll have the city clerk read that into the record.
Resolution number 11778-122016, resolution of appreciation to David M. Sorum. Whereas David M. Sorum began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on August 26th, 1996, is a full-time utility service worker. And whereas David M. Sorum responded to water main breaks in the early morning, late evening, and weekend hours in inclement weather and red meters on foot, then was part of the citywide changeover to the electronic trace meter reading program. And finally, the latest change to our current and upgraded Orion Electronic Radio Read Meter Reading System. Inspected the installation of water and sanitary sewer mains, flushed fire hydrants, climbed and inspected water towers, and spent countless hours maintaining lift stations. And whereas David M. Sorum tested and repaired water meters, was highly organized and meticulous in his record-keeping. He completed the state of Wisconsin Cross-Connection Control Tester Course and was certified as a cross-connectors surveyor and was instrumental in creating the cross-connection program for the commercial and industrial inspections and also overseeing this system. And whereas David M. Sorum has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service by virtue of his self-sacrifice and many tireless hours responding to the calls of its citizens. And whereas David M. Sorum has retired from his position of utility service worker with Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility effective December 1st, 2016, after completing 20 years and 3 months of full-time service. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek or and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to David M. Sorum for his years of dedicated and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the Water and Sewer Utility. And that best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to David M. Sorum and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to David M. Sorum. Passed and adopted this 20th day of December 2016.
Thank you, Catherine. And then thanks to David for a tremendous career. Never easy to go out on a freezing morning and fix a water main break, but I know our residents appreciate it because they always want to know when their water's going to be turned back on. So not an easy job, but done well. And we really sincerely appreciate the hard work over those 20 years. So good luck in your future endeavors and in your retirement. Need a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution 11778-122016, a resolution of appreciation to David M. Sorum, retiring utility service worker.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
We have three public hearings tonight. The first one is item number five. It's a special assessment consideration by the city to exercise its power under section 3.200 of the municipal code of the city of Oak Creek to levy special assessments upon abutting property for benefits conferred upon such property running on 3280 and 3310 East Kender Lane in the 4th District. The city clerk will read that public hearing notice into the record.
Public hearing number one is a public hearing on special assessments for final lift of asphalt and completion of pavement in accordance with resolution numbers 11382-071613 and 11409-100113, project number 05061, dated this first day of December 2016.
I'll make three calls for public comment on this item. Mike, do you have something to add? No? Okay. If you would like to make public comment, please, you should have filled out a form that looks like this. I will give you a chance to fill that out. But this is the first call for public comment on item number five. Second call. And third and final call for discussion on public hearing, item number five. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing and move to the actual agenda item six, which is the consideration of resolution number 11780-122016. It would authorize public improvements and levy special assessments against benefited property. Kender Lane CSM, project number 05061 in the 4th District. And open up to the council for questions and/or comments. Mike, you have anything? Go ahead.
I'd just give an introductory statement here. This was a subdivision that had all the public improvements, did not... The developer failed in his obligation to do the final lift of asphalt. After a period of non-compliance, the city publicly bid the work and completed the paving. And the cost of the work was $30,422.89. The special assessments are in accordance with the previous resolutions indicating an intent to assess the remaining developer-owned lots.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Arribe, I just wanted to check, that's not the item you wanted to comment on, correct? Okay, thank you. I'll open it up for Alderman Toman.
Okay, Mike. Is that... You said the remaining developer-owned lots? Is that why there's only two addresses listed?
That's correct.
Listed?
Yes. And of the two, only one is a buildable lot, the other is an outlot. So it's really... It can only be assessed against the one lot.
One assessment.
Just one lot being assessed, yes.
Okay. Because there are four homes on that cul-de-sac.
There are three lots that have been built on that were part of this. It was that tiny little one on the end of the Kender Lane cul-de-sac. At the time of the resolution, the intent was to assess against the remaining developer-owned parcel.
So are we going to be able to collect? That's the next question.
It's a legal question.
Do we have any idea of where we're at?
The... I mean, it's recorded. It was known at the time that the property changed hands because it has changed hands since that time. That was a recorded document, so...
In the audience, if you want to comment, fill out a form. I'll drop it off up here, right behind you. Thank you.
Melissa, you correct me if I'm wrong, but that is something that would be discovered in the title search as the property changes hands?
Good. Alderman Toman, yes. So at the time of the preliminary resolution, after that was adopted, that would have been recorded. So that would have appeared on any title search in terms of future transactions, a purchase or sale. So there would have been that showing on the title company that there would be that name for the special assessment.
Are we adding the collection, the practical part of it?
Well, I would defer to Bridget on that piece. We have not yet sent notices. This is your opportunity to make that determination tonight on the final resolution. Right.
Right. So both of these have sat as what we call contemplated special assessments. So when we do get inquiries regarding certain properties and special assessments, we release the information in a dollar amount as contemplated, knowing that council has not finished the formal action of this. So once the formal action is approved, then finance goes through sending out the paperwork to the individual, giving them the opportunity to pay in full upfront without interest, or they can choose their options to go through payment plans on the tax roll.
Any other Alderman questions?
I got a question.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Being that there's an outlot there, and it seems like we've got somebody in the audience that may have purchased the other lot, is that still going to be assessed 50/50 on outlot and a lot? Or is the owner of that lot now going to have to pay the full assessment?
It's... Per the ordinance, am I using the correct legal term? Can only be on a buildable lot, so would not be on the outlot at all.
Go ahead.
The preliminary resolution Alderman Verhaelen provided for assessment against that lot. So there was a lot... This CSM, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but I believe that it was a lot and two outlots. So in terms of the transactions, there was one lot, which is being specially assessed, proposed in the resolution for your consideration, the full amount against that one lot, not against either of the two outlots.
Good. Mr. Schmidt. Name an address for the record.
7981 South 20th Street, Oak Creek. I purchased 3280 and the two outlots. And 3273, which address was not brought up, I also purchased that lot. I was told that there's three houses in that cul-de-sac, and then there's the outlot. And I was told at the time that I purchased the lots that the outlot would not be a part of this, which it sounds like it's not going to be because it's not a buildable lot. So I was told by engineering that the three buildable lots were going to split it in thirds. And I was responsible for 2/3 of that because I bought two lots, built two houses, sold both houses, got a estimate from the city of Oak Creek of the estimated my cost so the title company could escrow the money, which I did, at more than what the city said because of overages and whatever. So I'm hoping this can get resolved because when I pay... I'm responsible for the two. When I pay the city, I get my money from escrow. So that's... So it's not going to go on the tax bill because I'm going to pay it instantly when the bill gets... So hopefully we can pay this bill. But I... My question is for you guys is that 3273 was not brought up as an address of this... For the... What I was told is going to be in three... Divided by three. Not just this one.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah. In preparation for this public hearing, did have a conversation with assistant city engineer Brian Johnston. He did relay that there was a conversation that the assessment was going to be against the three lots, and that really that was an error. The preliminary resolution was with the intent to assess against the remaining developer-owned lot. So that would be a lot 3280, 3310, of course, is the outlot, which is not going to actually have the assessment.
I make it clear for you?
So that's an error? It's not... It's just going to be against 3280?
That's what is on the... That is what's on the agenda here tonight, yes.
So you're going to put an assessment for $30,000 on that one lot?
That was the action under resolution 11382.
Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, that's ridiculous. How can you... How can engineering make an error and put a $30,000 assessment when I have money escrowed on a lot that was supposed to be in this... Yeah, I mean, how am I going to get my money out of escrow? If I don't pay that bill, I can't get my money back. And I definitely didn't escrow 30,000 because I only have two of the three, which I was told, and...
All right, we got two conversations going at the same time. Finish your point, and we'll go to legal.
My point's pretty clear. I was told by engineering that this is going to be divided by three. It's obviously not.
Okay. What I want you to focus on with your comments is the specifics of the item that's in front of us, which is that assessment, with the language that's used in this...
Well, this gentleman just said it was an error by engineering. So that's part of this discussion, I would assume, right?
Okay. So your point is you don't feel it's fair? Is that your final point?
Not at all.
Okay. I got it. So the attorney, have any comments? Okay. Do you have a comment, Alderman Verhaelen?
I just wanted to know, the way your escrow is set up, do you have a certain amount on each lot escrowed? So each lot would have to be named for you to get your escrow money, correct?
Correct.
That's why saying he can't do it the way you're doing it because he can only get a portion of his escrow money instead of all of it because you're only mentioning one lot. You have to mention all three lots for him to get all his escrow money.
And why is the... Why is it the judgment against the person that... It's against the developer? Is that... Who is it?
It's against that property. It's against that parcel.
That parcel only.
It stays with that parcel. If the property owner... If the property changes hands, it goes to the new owner.
Okay.
And that is part of the transaction. It's a recorded document. Comes to light as the property changes hands.
And there's nothing I can do about the error by engineering?
I think we have to focus on what's written in the agenda tonight in that resolution.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Alderman Kurkowski.
How much... When you talked about escrow money for three parcels, how much are you talking about? How much have you escrowed?
Roughly, roughly, I only have two parcels. The third was, I believe, Miracle Homes. I have roughly $22,000 in escrow. That's what I was... Actually, I'm wrong. I was told $11,000 was going to be the amount owed per parcel. Title company usually escrows 1.5%, which came to about, I don't really recall, $13,000, $14,000 apiece.
You're not the first... You said you just recently... You recently bought this property?
I purchased 3280 and 15, and probably 3273 and 15 as well. And I was told by engineering that both lots were going to be assessed equally. I sold both houses with the equal escrow because it was going to be divided by three, but that's not what it sounds like.
When did you buy and sell these parcels?
Bought both in 15, sold one in 15, sold one in 16.
And Mike, this goes back to 2006.
Um, let's see here. The preliminary resolution is of July 16th of 2013.
But I was just looking at the development agreement that was signed back in 2006.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. October 1st of 2013. 2006 is when the development agreement was signed and the project was approved.
Okay.
Mike, so we gave notice...
Alderman Gale.
Sorry, we gave... Mayor, thanks. We gave notice we're going to special assess as of the action on preliminary action or recommendation taken October 1st of 13. Is that what you said? That was the preliminary authorization, Melissa?
Correct.
Do we know how the counter recorded that on the... And at that time, we were understanding that three of the properties were going to be subject to that order, right?
On the resolution 11409 on October 1st, 2013, that was to assess against the one-owner parcel. One-owner, excuse me, developer-owned parcel.
Singular, one.
Yes.
We have a tax key or anything associated with that ordinance or address?
That's the 8709049.
And our ordinance read that, or whatever the action we took that night had that in it? Notation?
Yeah, I believe it also had the 3310, which is that outlot that we've been talking about.
Okay, yeah, so that's not buildable, so it's not relevant. But from a recording standpoint, 3280 had the notation that the special... Notice of special assess was potentially operative on that property. And that's the only property that would have had that, correct?
Yes.
In 2006.
2013.
2013. Okay. Final comment, you can sit down then. It's going to be up to the council to decide what they want to do, so...
I guess the city lied to me, I guess, that's...
Nobody lies. Nobody lies. Don't say that.
Then they should not have told me information that was not true.
Nobody's perfect. At the time, it may have been true. Thank you. Counsel. Alderman Kurkowski.
Mayor, I'm sorry, but I'm just a little bit more confused now than I was at the beginning of this item when we started this. So I'm concerned that I can't make a good decision listening to Mike's side of the story and then the resident's side of the story. Perhaps I'd like to be able to read more information, some historical stuff. I don't know why he was able to buy the property in 2015 when these problems were like in 2013 or even before that. I mean, why wasn't this stuff caught years ago? So it seems we have to come to some resolution, but it seems like the current owner might be, I don't know, just getting the short end of the stick because something got missed. At least that's the way I feel, and I have a hard time making a decision on this item tonight.
Any other Alderman want to weigh in?
I concur with Alderman Kurkowski. I don't think we have enough information to make a good decision here right now.
Go ahead. Okay. We'll hold item six. Motion to hold.
I'll move to hold item number six.
Before we do that...
Go ahead, Alderman Toman.
Do you have anything to add, Melissa, tonight about the recovery of the escrow? That seems to be the issue here.
Sure, Alderman Toman. I mean, to Mr. Schmidt's points, you know, I would say two things. One, as far as the escrow between buyer and seller, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Brad, you were the seller, you indicated, as to both of these transactions. So to that end, that's a private matter, I would say, between buyer and seller. He certainly informed us as to pieces of that transaction. As to Alderman Kurkowski's point about what was known, what did we have in front of us? What was known from 2006 to 2013? At the time that Mr. Schmidt was transacting the sale to the now-owner of these parcels, that fact of the preliminary resolution, which had been recorded with the Register of Deeds in Moakie County, had shown up on the title, which is the reason for having escrowed for those two lots. Right? So to that extent, I would say procedurally, there's a disconnect certainly from representations that were made to Mr. Schmidt, not putting words in his mouth, but certainly some concerns about how he would get his escrow back. In terms of whatever action the council takes tonight or at a future point in time, if it's a final resolution, and I am just taking a position for an example, if it were to assess just against the one then-developer-owned lot at the time of the 2013 resolutions, that escrow, so to speak, could be contemplated for what had been held for that particular lot. I believe it's the 3280. As far as that final resolution then being recorded, it would seem that then the escrow that had been set aside for the other lot, I don't want to speak out of turn, but that is no longer contemplated in the final resolution. So that return of funds, where it's no longer contemplated to be part of a special assessment, seemingly would be returned to Mr. Schmidt. So I don't want to talk too far afield, but just trying to answer some of the pieces that are floating around here. To Alderman Kurkowski's point about not having enough information, that's what I have to offer tonight for what I'm aware of. And then as to Alderman Toman's comments, not sure if that really answered your question, but if there's something additional, I can try to answer.
Well, originally, when I asked the first question about why there's only two addresses included in there, I guess I got part of it answered because the assessment moving forward would go to after the sale and would continue to move on. I get that part of it, but this escrow issue, I agree with Alderman Kurkowski. I don't have enough information to make a good decision tonight.
Okay. Let's get a motion in a second.
I'll make a... Toman will make a motion to hold six.
Kuzikowski, second.
Hold on. Gale already made... You make the motion?
Oh, sorry.
You just need a second then.
Second, I'll second.
Did you make the motion or just say you were going to make a motion? You made it? Okay. Just need a second.
I'll second it.
All right. Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for your comments. All right. Moving on to the public hearing for item seven. It's a special assessment public hearing to consider the city's intention to exercise its power under section 3.200 of the municipal code of the city of Oak Creek to levy special assessments upon abutting property for benefits conferred upon properties at tax key numbers as listed in the 5th District. City clerk will read that public hearing notice.
Public hearing number two is a public hearing on special assessments for final lift of asphalt and completion of pavement in accordance with resolution numbers 11384-071613, 11405-100113, and 11407-100113, project number 04056, dated this first day of December 2016.
I'll make three calls for public comment on this item. Please come forward, state your name and address. I have a comment form from Smitha Chintamane. Got that right?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alder persons. I'm from LaFayette, Von Briesen Roper. We represent 11, the 11 lots that are subject to this special assessment. We submitted a letter into the city attorney's office yesterday. I believe Attorney Carl's has copies of my letter.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can read the letter into the record if you'd like me to, or I can summarize my letter to those who don't have copies.
We all have copies up here.
You did distribute them.
You did, okay.
Quick summary.
Quick summary, great. As my letter stated, the imposition of the assessments for 11 lots should not occur because it is against the language of the development agreement, which was recorded in September of 2004. The requirement... The agreement requires the developer to deposit a sufficient sum of money to serve as collateral for the promptful and faithful performance of the developer for each and every provision. One of the provisions was a duty to complete all the street improvements, and the collateral was not to be returned by the city until those improvements were satisfactorily completed. It's our understanding that the collateral was deposited by the developer in the amount of $76,000 in June of '05. But the city, for reasons unbeknownst to us, refunded the developer $45,000 approximately in June of 2007. And therefore, it's a city that should bear the total cost of the needed improvements. Going forward, if the... If any amount would be truly assessed, it must be spread equally amongst the 36 lots under the development agreement language, which requires a city to impose special assessments upon each and every building site in the development, not only upon the 11 of the 36 building sites. The special assessment, we believe, is also contrary to the language of Wisconsin statute section 66.0703 and the city ordinance 3.20, which addresses benefited properties, which require the special assessments be fairly spread over all benefited properties. And we believe also a violation of the equal protection clause, 42 U.S.C., section 1983.
Thank you for your comments. We may bring you back up at some point. Second call for public comment on item number seven. Third and final call for public comment on item number seven. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing, move to discussion of item number eight, which is a consideration of resolution number 11779-122016, authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefited property in the Willow Creek subdivision, project number 04056 in the 5th District. Open it up to the counsel and the attorney, if she has any comments. Counsel. Alderman Kurkowski.
I guess I don't understand how the residents that have been... Mike, correct me, there have been residents living there in that subdivision with what I would call an inferior road because the final lift isn't there. Correct?
That is correct until the city did have the work completed, yes.
Until the city did the work.
Right, correct.
Okay. So in my non-lawyer type of mind here, I was... I read 42 U.S.C., 1983, and I don't understand how the rights of those who have been somewhat tarnished by having an inferior road have to pay for that inconvenience because there's 11 parcels that are subject to... because there's 11 parcels that are subject to what we've done in the past, I believe. You know, where we've had a special assessment on lots that aren't developed. It just seems to me that the, I don't want to start mumbling here, but the 11 properties are probably the ones that need to bear the cost it is. For my feelings that those property owners who've had that inferior road have had to put up with since this development started or was completed. That's the way I feel about it.
Other comments from the aldermen?
Just a question, are all the lots owned by the same individual or company, all 11?
Yeah, just real, real quick history here that the first time that these assessments were before the council, it was contemplated against all 36 buildable lots. Council was not prepared, excuse me?
When was that?
That was in July of 2013. Council held that. We came back in October of that year, and the motion then was to assess against the remaining developer-owned lots, 11 in total there. And so that's kind of where we're at here today, that there's an objection that it's just the 11 lots and not all 36 lots.
I guess my question was, are those lots all currently owned by the same individual? Or have they all been sold and there's different people?
I believe that they, some have changed hands in Bridget, are you aware? Yeah. Because we've been taking calls over these last couple of years as transactions are contemplated.
Mike, you're understanding what they would all have been purchased with the stipulation that the notice is on the deed that there is a potential special assessment pending sort of council action.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess, I guess if that's, if that's something that did take place at the, at the time of purchase by anybody that bought any of these lots, I guess they would have been aware of that. However, I don't know why at that time the money wasn't, as in the other case, we just heard escrowed or whatever to cover those costs.
Essentially was, you don't know.
Correct. It most likely would have been. So again, it's the same procedure that we follow. If we're called on a property, we're checking our special assessments that are current, deferred, as well as the ones that are contemplated. And we're informing the individual, whether it's the buyer, the seller, or the title company, that there's a contemplated special assessment. Right now it's for this amount. We're waiting for our final cost and to come back for council action before it gets billed. So the majority of the time in that situation, if there's a lender involved, there's going to be an escrow as well.
Alderman Kerkowski.
One quick, I was just thinking about this. Those property owners that have, I mean, those folks that have houses on that road, I mean, they, they bought and built with, expecting a good faith effort by the developer to finish the road, and the developer didn't. So I don't feel that those folks should be punished for that.
Okay, Alderman Gail.
Yeah, Mayor, the spirit of our action taken back in, in October of 2013 really was to focus on the developer's obligations here to fulfill his obligations under the development agreement to finish the lift of the asphalt in the development despite the fact that it hadn't been 75% built out at that time. So the city chose to step in and, and to save costs from a further deterioration of the pavement and the curbing there. So really, our action there in spirit of that was to be reimbursed on that developer or subsequent owners to get that obligation and take that off. You know, the existing homeowners had paid, you know, their, on their lots, they're assumed, you know, fair value of what it would take to improve and finalize the lifts, the streetlights, the trees, whatever. You know, the bankruptcy of the developers, you know, here and there. I mean, the obligation follows with the subsequent order, and I think that was the spirit of our action there to make sure that, because those 11 lots were owned by that bankrupt developer who eventually went bankrupt, that those, we sought to recoup the, the gap in the escrow with the cost of the final lift of asphalt was really obligation. I think that was the action and the intent of what we had done in 2013. Those owners have all, you know, the owners of the 11 lots that have changed hands. In the meantime, there's actually several houses that are being built, so you know that that hasn't stopped some purchases and sales. And obviously, in the interest of the city and the current bank owner to have these lots transact as soon as we can. It's from our standpoint, it's tax revenue. From the bank owner's standpoint, they don't get paid to own property. They get paid to get rid of it. I mean, the banks don't own land for, take owning land. So here, we're trying to find a happy medium here to move forward and get this passed as we've expended extensive staff time here dealing with this particular situation. And we need to find some common ground to continue to move on. But the fact that the existing homeowners there should not be really subject to this action, and we should really focus on those 11 lot owners or 11 lots that were now in subsequent hands after the developer's bankruptcy. So I think to continue to try and go down that road makes sense. We have to obviously, you know, we've gone on this path here for, you know, three years already with legal costs and such. So we've, we've got a project that's basically been paid for and funded already through our street improvement program. We need to put some finality here and find a way to move forward, I think. So, but I think still focusing on those 11 lots is currently the way to go.
Hey, any other comments or questions? I need a motion on eight. In the fifth district.
Yep. It was going to move to approve resolution 11779-122016, authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefited properties.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Brahan.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And the final public hearing for this evening is item number nine. It's a conditional use public hearing, a request submitted by Sean McKibben on Oak Park Place for an amendment to the time of compliance section of the existing conditional use permit affecting the property at 1980 West Rossin Avenue in the second district. City clerk will now read the public hearing notice into the record.
Public hearing number three is to consider a request submitted by Sean McKibben, Oak Park Place, for an amendment of the time of compliance section of the existing conditional use permit affecting the property at 1980 West Rossin Avenue. The applicant is Sean McKibben, Oak Park Place. Property owner, Oak Park Properties of Oak Creek LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is November 23, 2015.
I have a public, this is the first call. So I have the public comment forum, but you don't wish to speak. Do you have a comment written down or? Oh, this comment is, okay, got it. So your comment is, for the record, you would like to see 20th Street widened from West Wood Avenue to Rossin Avenue? Is that correct? Okay, thank you for that. Second call for public comment on item number nine. Third and final call for item number nine. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing and move to a discussion of item number 10, which is the consideration of ordinance number 2833. It would amend the ordinance number 2747 to extend section 11 time of compliance to a deadline of May 31, 2017, for the commencement of construction of phase one on the property located at 1980 West Rossin Avenue in the second district. Open it up to the council for any questions or comments. Alderman Bukavich.
I'm just going to inform the council how we looked at this at planning. The extension was granted at planning. I believe it was unanimously done. The developer came in and he was dealing with some state issues. His property sits off on an exit ramp, excuse me, onto Rossin Avenue. And they, I want to say they were working with the city on the entrance at 20. So the stars just didn't align for him, but we did grant the extension. We didn't have any heartburn with it, and I am in favor of the extension.
Any other alderman comments? Alderman Gail.
Thanks, Dan. Doug, from your standpoint, the developer still serious about this, moving this project forward?
Sure, as evidenced by the application for the extension and the relatively short timeframe for the extension that he's requesting. So that they're ready to go and ready to get going on this in the spring.
Okay, great.
Mr. Uribe, what is the, you want to step up there for us? I just have a question for you. I have a question for you. Yeah. Name and address for the record.
Hugo Uribe, 7025 South 20th Street.
So you made a comment that you wanted to see the road widened.
I'm seeing increasing traffic on that street, and with families, you know, living in that street, there's no way for a safe path of walking. There is a sidewalk that ends on West Wood Avenue, and beyond that is just gravel, you know. So when families want to walk up and down that street, it's very difficult and unsafe, you know. So with the new development coming up across the street from my house, I can see even more increase of traffic. So either winding the street to make it safer for pedestrians or putting a sidewalk would be nice, so.
Thanks for your comments. I just wanted to know where you're coming from. Appreciate it. Any other comments? Motion on 10.
Bukavich will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2833, amending ordinance number 2747 to extend section 11 time of compliance to a deadline of May 31, 2017, for the commencement of construction of phase one on the property located at 1980 West Rossin Avenue. Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Brahan.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
We'll keep you posted. Thanks, folks. All right, moving on to new business. Item 11 is a consideration of resolution number 11782-122016. It would approve, approve a lease agreement between the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce and the city of Oak Creek. Who's speaking to this issue? Doug Seymour?
Thank you. Earlier this year, the representatives from the chamber approached the city regarding the potential availability of space within the civic center for the offices of the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce. Of course, the chamber's current offices are located in the Oak Creek Community Center, which prior to our move, obviously, had been located adjacent to the Oak Creek City Hall and Library. And they, being the chamber, felt that the mission and partnerships with the chamber members would be enhanced if they had a physical presence adjacent to, or in this case, within the civic center, much as they had when they were at, when we were both at the former location. So based on those initial discussions, a proposal was presented to the chamber that would make available to them a 274 square foot leased space at the Oak Creek Civic Center. And that space, if you're familiar with the progression, the evolution of the building, was the space that was formerly designated as the common council executive conference room, which would have been across the hall and right adjacent to the east entrance on Market Street. Obviously, that since has been relocated to its current configuration. That space really was unprogrammed as a extra meeting space and could be available for use, for lease by the chamber if the council desires that to take place. The terms of the agreement would be for two years initially, at an annual rate of $9,600, which would include utilities and the use of the city's phone system, reasonable use of printers and copiers, as well as an internet connection. Important to note that at no time would the chamber or have any access to the city's secured networks. We maintain separation with respect to those facilities and infrastructure. The chamber would also have the ability to use the civic center meeting rooms in accordance with current fee and reservation policies that are in place, that were adopted by the council. So if the council is comfortable with the terms of this draft lease, I would note that Barb Wesner is with us this evening to answer any questions that you may have. They have a couple of options. They could approve the lease, in which case they could authorize the mayor and city clerk entering into the agreement. And I would suggest that that motion would include a language that would allow for any non-substantive corrections or conditions as identified by the city attorney. The city council could also discuss this in the terms of the lease, but they could also withhold action to a future meeting. Now, I think Barb, when she approaches the mic, she'll tell you that in their, they being the chamber, have a few things going on in January that they're not eager to make the move on January 1, but that perhaps, I mean, if there are some questions to be answered, we could potentially have another meeting cycle or two just to iron out those terms. But I think that the proposal that's being forwarded to you has been vetted through the CDA. The CDA has felt that there is some partnerships to be had there and some enhancement of service to the members and to the businesses within the city of Oak Creek. And I believe you have the minutes of that meeting. But I think I would, at this point, I would let Barb say a few words, and I would be available to answer any questions the council has regarding the potential lease.
Welcome, Barb. Name and address for the record.
Barbara Wesner, 7479 Carter Circle South in Franklin. And in Huron Oak Creek, 8580 South Howell is the address for the South Suburban Chamber currently. The, the chamber is very interested in being able to partner and in the synergy that would be possible with our relocation to the civic center. The board has approved and is very pleased with the possibility. And I think we would be very good tenants, and I think we would be also, we would, we would appreciate the kind of activity and being able to be in this location, which is certainly the most growing development in the entire area. So I'm not sure, in terms of the timing, we are prepared to move if we can do it next week even. We are prepared to do that. If there are some questions yet and you need to take more time, then we would ask that it be pushed beyond our annual dinner, which is on February 2nd. But right now, we can. We can move next week if we need to.
What would your preference be, to wait till?
Boy, if we could, my question and thing that does keep me awake at night is just making sure that all of our equipment, our computer, and all of that can be in place by the first week of January. If that is possible, we can make the move next week.
Okay, and I know you guys have already kind of prepped yourself for the move back at your old location. And you've been at the community center for how long?
According to the records, apparently it's 15, 16 years.
Almost as long as that building's been there, right?
I think so. I think it moved, there were, there was someone there almost immediately as soon as the building was built.
And if anyone doesn't know, the chamber and the city of Oak Creek have been great partners in the past for lots of different projects. Most recently is the State of the Cities, which was right across the halls. Good partners. I think it's a great use. We have an empty room that we're not utilizing for anything else. I think it's a great spot, given the location of it, right inside that doorway. So I certainly don't have any problems with it. I think it'd be a great partnership. But I'll open up to the council for questions. Alderman Kerkowski.
Barb, I don't want to, no seasonal pun intended. I don't want to sound like a Scrooge. But I do, I mean, I support this, the lease, but I have some questions or concerns. Over at the community center, are you self-contained with regards to printing and copying and stuff like that over there?
We are. Yes, right now we are.
That would be my consternation with this lease is that in the, on the green piece of paper, it says, reasonable use of printers and copiers, as well as internet connection. But in the lease, in paragraph seven, it says that tenants shall have access to ordinary use of the following office equipment, the copper scanners and, you know, phones. But then it says, tenant, tenants shall be responsible for its own costs associated with printing, copying, postage, and mailing. So I'm a little conflicted there with, with what it says in one piece of paper, what it says in the other. And I would like to see them self-contained. I think office supplies are an immense expense to our budget, and I really think no other, no other company would go lease in somebody else's property and say, hey, come on over and use our copiers and our printers and stuff like that. I mean, you're leasing, it's your property, it's your business. We shouldn't be in the business of providing, not just the chamber, but anybody with access to printers and copiers and our paper and our ink and our toner and everything that goes along with that. That's it.
Any questions? Go ahead, Alderman Guzekowski.
Barbara, you know, you mentioned the word synergies and the length of time that you have been at the community center, 15 or 16 years, or that you go get a lot of synergies here. Why are you leaving the community center?
Why are we leaving?
Looking to?
Because this seemed to be a good opportunity for us. We're not leaving there in any way because of any bad feelings or that the building isn't, isn't good for us. I think their staff, and I'm not speaking on their behalf, I think, you know, they probably could use the space as well, but they haven't been. Um, but they haven't been encouraging us to move. It just seems like this would be a good place for us to be.
And just, you do work with other, um, cities besides Oak Creek, so it's, it's not just like, so if you stayed there, it would be the same as, because you'll still have, uh, you're working with South, South Suburban, so.
That's right. We still have an Oak Creek address. Yes, about a third of our members are from Oak Creek, about a third from Franklin and a third from the entire surrounding communities. So I've always said that other than putting an office on the median on 27th Street, um, we have to be somewhere.
And just as a bit of historical perspective, prior to their relocation at the community center, they were actually part of the city hall.
Before your time?
That is well before my time, yes. Very much so.
That mine.
So there's a precedent there. There's a precedent there certainly and, uh, again, I think it's a great use. Um, we can figure out the printing thing, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, and I think that originally we were of the, of the mindset that, I mean, some of those could be potentially built into the cost of the lease. But I, I certainly concur and agree with Alderman Kirkowski that a clean separation is probably in the best interest of both parties.
And that would certainly be acceptable to us as well, because we are, right now, we're also very, you know, self-contained. And we also don't do a great deal of printing. Of course, we do some, but, uh, or copying, I should say.
The, the one thing I, I would note, just as far as time is concerned, I mean, if you do, uh, wish to occupy on January 1, I think you should do so with the knowledge that probably your, your infrastructure and your technology probably won't be to the point of fully operational, just given, uh, the transition. I mean, having been through that, certainly, uh, took us, uh, quite a bit. And, uh, given the, this being over the, the transition being over the holidays, the, the availability of some of our IT staff to assist you in that would be somewhat limited. So, I mean, again, up to you, but just, if, if you do so, uh, wish to go in as of the first, just recognize that you may, there probably will be some issues.
Okay, I can understand that.
Anybody else?
Does anything have to be rewritten in that, or are we gonna, how are we gonna handle that stuff? I mean, I-
Maybe we could adjust the, the date of the lease onto a, a different starting date?
I don't have a problem with going forward tonight, just so that we all understand that maybe there might be a few tweaks that need to be done. If that's acceptable to anybody else.
Attorney?
It's my two points to try to, um, make sure Doug and I are on the same page. I mean, I would say that if there's a contemplation, is there a contemplation for a different commencement date or not?
Well, if, if, if the decision is made to occupy as of February or, or March, I, I don't necessarily want the, the rent to accrue in January. I don't think that'd be appropriate.
So my suggestion would be, if there's going to be an adoption of this resolution, that it would be just subject to any technical corrections as approved by the city administrator and city attorney, so we can flush that out with the chamber.
You okay with that?
I'm good with that. Thank you.
Motion on, uh, 11.
We want to affect-
Alderman Gale.
Sorry, Steve. Effective date, January 1 of 17? Is that what we're looking for? What did you say?
Why don't we, I've got a suggestion.
Alderman Toman.
$9,600 comes out to $800 a month. Why don't we just base it on the monthly, the occupancy? Do it on a monthly basis. If it's February, it's 800 less. If it's March, it's 800 less.
Would that be the technical corrections? Would that cover that?
Covered and we can address that with the chamber as well, Alderman Toman.
Yes.
So. A continuing conversation, it sounds like, to try to finalize this lease is what we will do.
Getting to a good result.
Okay, very good.
Motion.
Gale, move to approve Resolution 11782-122016 approving a lease agreement between the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce and the City of Oak Creek, subject to technical corrections and approval of, uh, city administrator and city attorney and, uh, subject to, uh, negotiated commencement date.
One second.
Toman seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
All right, full speed ahead. All right, item 12 is a, is a consideration of Resolution Number 11775-122016, assigning the fund balance of the Economic Development Fund. Bridget, Finance Director.
Good evening. The resolution that we have before you tonight is actually a first for the city. So in October, we updated our resolution per GASB statement number 54, which is a scary accounting term, but it talks about how we, uh, utilize the fund balances within our special revenue funds. That resolution allows us to, um, the city administrator and finance director to assign some of the fund balances for a specific use. So tonight, we are discussing a proposed project that's related to parcel 8139039, which is just down the road from us. And we are looking to assign a portion of the Economic Development Fund, um, fund balance as of December 31st, 2016. So I'm gonna skip down to the fiscal impact portion because it's rather wordy and lots of numbers, which is how I operate. So bear with me as, as we get through this, but in wanting to bring this forward for you, we are looking to do it formally, just for the record, to make it easier to track and make sure that everybody in the future, um, is on the same page for this. So we are estimating at the end of 2016 that we're gonna have a little over a million dollars in the Economic Development Fund balance. That's broken out currently into three categories. Part of it is an advance from TIF 7 that is non-spendable yet because we haven't had TIF 7 pay it back. The other two pieces are dollars that would remain in the Economic Development Fund and dollars that would be transferred to the Tourism Commission, which is something that we've been working on as of late. So we are asking to assign 200,000 of the portion labeled for the Economic Development Fund and 150,000 of the portion labeled for the Tourism Commission. And we do currently have them broken out in these three sections, which is why I'm discussing them that way. Um, so by assigning these dollars, we are looking for them to be spent within two years. If they are not spent on a project on the listed parcel, they will be turned over to the Tourism Commission as applicable or back to the CDA fund balance.
Questions? Motion.
Gale, move to approve Resolution 11775-122016 assigning the fund balance of the Economic Development Fund.
Kuzakowski, a second.
Do I get a second?
Yep.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
All right, we're gonna skip 13 and move that to, uh, after 19. Uh, under health, we have two resolutions we're gonna be talking about. Just as a preface to that, both of these, uh, identical resolutions were passed unanimously by the South Milwaukee Council tonight unanimously, and they were both passed by our Board of Health last week with the exact same language. So, item 19, or item 14, rather, is a consideration of Resolution Number 11783-122016. It would approve an extension to a memorandum of understanding binding between the City of Oak Creek and the City of South Milwaukee for interim health officer services. I have Jackie and Ann here could answer any questions. Basically, we are extending that agreement. How many days? 180 days to, um, cover ourself, since we don't have a health director in place, so we're using the services of Jackie. Or, what do you mean? Did you have some comments, Andrew?
I can make some.
Go ahead. Don't just make them up.
Thought you were gonna, thought you were gonna steal all my thunder here.
No, it's, it's your thing. Go ahead.
Thank you for that. Well, it's two separate actions, but they're interrelated, right? So let me give a brief timeline of where, how we got here today and then kind of divorce the two action steps for the, for the council. Uh, and as you know, in March of, uh, March 1st, 2016, we had our former health officer retire. Shortly thereafter, we, um, appointed our deputy health officer as interim health officer. In approximately May of 2016, the state flagged, uh, the credentials of the deputy health officer in terms of the Level 3 status. There are very stringent criteria. Um, and we were in, in jeopardy of losing that Level 3 status for the time being as we had a vacant health officer position. Uh, in June of 16, we approved the initial MLU that we're looking to extend tonight in action number one, um, for interim health officer services with the City of South Milwaukee, their health officer Jackie Obi. Uh, so that's number one. That's what we're looking, looking to do tonight. Uh, we obviously have, still have a vacancy in our own health office, uh, health officer position. Uh, and we, you know, you know, again, looking to extend the MLU as a placeholder. Um, the second, uh, action is what are we going to do in the time that we're extending the MLU? Uh, and that's the, the next resolution, and that is engaging the Public Policy Forum to provide a, a list of, a range of options, pros, cons, uh, on how, uh, shared health services, shared health staffing between the two communities, um, may look into the future. Um, I know we, we have, uh, some emerging trends in local government. I know City of Oak Creek, uh, has, uh, you know, has keyed in on intergovernmental, uh, relationships and shared services before, and that's something we want to continue to lead on. Uh, I know that, that is, has been spoken about at, at budget time among many council, council members, as well as the mayor. So, uh, continuing that theme, and I, I think that's incumbent on us, and incumbent on the council. So, uh, we do want to look at those things and, and meet the, uh, the emerging trends and, and meeting the challenges that we have to at local governments, uh, across the state and nation. So that second piece would be to, um, you know, take a look at a menu of, of options that we can consider for the future of our health office. Uh, I would say that the Board of Health was, was very receptive to both of these and, and recommended council approval. Uh, just to provide some flavor for their discussion, though, I would say they, uh, definitely wanted to ensure that, uh, the background data provided by the Public Policy Forum was accompanied, uh, or accompanies their white paper. I think we would ask for that. Uh, and, uh, we, we also want to make sure that both quantitatively and qualitatively, uh, the staff of each of the health departments in the communities, as well as the boards of health in each of the communities, uh, you know, are tapped in and plugged into the, this process. And of course, we wouldn't have it any other way. Uh, we would, uh, like to move forward as, as presented in the memo. It is strategic, a quick turnaround for the Public Policy Forum study is strategic. We certainly want to, uh, set a pathway for, for our health, health department here as soon as we can. So with that, I'll answer any questions or, um, take any suggestions or comments.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Just want to add to what the city administrator said is that the cost of the survey is, uh, being split equally between the two cities. Uh, there's a, there's a small discount for having, uh, two cities involved in this. And, um, they will, um, they're gonna come back with a report saying, "Yes, we, we suggest this," and it could be, um, in totality of, of, of shared services. Or they may come back and say, "Nope, I think you guys are doing it fine just the way it is." Or there might be an in-between thing, you know, they, you guys can do this on your own, but maybe you can do this as shared services. So it's, uh, it's, uh, certainly the time to, uh, look into this since we do have an interim health officer. And, um, and, and the way it's geared is that it'll be done in time before this 180 days are up, so we'll either know whether to get our own or, or move forward with some sort of shared, shared services.
And we do have a, in a case that they suggest that we shouldn't go for, we do have a, uh, job posting ready and, ready to be sent out for our own full-time health director. So it's really up to the, uh, Board of Health in both cities, the councils in both cities, to evaluate what the Public Policy Forum has to say about it and, um, make a decision based on that, on that good information, so. As you've asked us in the past, we're, we're presenting the ideas. We're talking about shared services as a, you know, potential budget savings and inefficiency savings. We're doing it well in advance of you, you know, of you having to consider what you're gonna do, but we ultimately have to provide the best services and that's always gonna be the goal here, so. Hopefully this, uh, this plan will, or this suggestion will turn out to be something we can use. Any other questions? Motion.
Kirkowski will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1173-122016, approving an extension to a memorandum of understanding binding between the City of Oak Creek and the City of South Milwaukee for interim health officer services.
Bukavich will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
And item 15 is a consideration of Resolution Number 11784-122016, accepting a proposal and authorizing the work of the Public Policy Forum regarding exploration of public health service sharing in Oak Creek and South Milwaukee. Any other discussion? Motion.
Kuzakowski will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 11784-122016, accepting a proposal and authorizing the work of the Public Policy Forum regarding exploration of public health services sharing in Oak Creek and South Milwaukee.
Bukavich will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
All right. Well, thank you to Jackie and Ann for your help in the process as well. Appreciate it. Have a good night. All right, moving on. Streets, Parks and Recreation, item 16 is a motion to authorize the Streets, Parks and Forest Department utilization of funding within their current fiscal year 2016 budget to purchase repair parts for the city's tub grinder from WHO Manufacturing Company in the amount of $26,875.20. Ted Johnson's here to answer your questions. Sir?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, when we were doing preventive maintenance on the unit, uh, we noticed, uh, in the kind of business end of the tub grinder, where the hammers and the rods are, uh, that we're getting cracks in the, in the actual, uh, unit itself. Uh, we did try to repair it. Uh, some of it has just aged and it's wore thin. Uh, we don't feel it's necessarily safe to continue to run it. Uh, we did contact, uh, the manufacturer and unfortunately, we can't, uh, bid this because, uh, these parts are only available through the manufacturer for this particular unit. Uh, they do have one in stock and, uh, and, uh, the price is $26,000 and they would be able to ship it out to us, uh, right away. So we could take delivery on it, uh, as early as, I believe, the 24th. They said they could possibly get it here.
Ted, what's your-
Alderman Gale.
Sorry. What's your expected useful life out of a major repair like this on this kind of machine?
Well, uh, that grinder's been around for, I believe, about 15 years. And, uh, and, you know, it, it definitely, that is the business end of it. Uh, it's got the hammers that swing around in there and that's what beats the wood, uh, to make the, the mulch. So I, I think we got our money's worth out of this particular part of it. The, the unit itself, I believe the city paid about 170,000 for it 15 years ago. If we were to buy a new one, uh, it's in excess of $450,000 for that unit.
Hey, how often are you using this thing?
Uh, we actually use it, um, over, over four times a year. The four times a year is, uh, for the, the branch pickup from the residents and then we probably run it another two times just from drop-offs into the yard. So, uh, um, we grind up quite a bit of mulch with it. Uh, it would cost us well over $26,000 if we had to rent one out for just a season.
Any, have any questions? As a customer, I, I appreciate the mulch. I use it every year.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, you know, I think that, uh, the city having this piece of equipment, um, you have to, you have to add in all of the, uh, expenses that you'd have getting rid of all the brush and tree stumps and whatever else they can run through this thing too. So that's a cost that's not added into the actual cost of the machine or you're, you're saving the actual cost of disposal too.
I think it's well worth it. Any other questions? Motion.
Gale, move to authorize the Streets, Parks and Forest Department utilization of funding within their current fiscal year 2016 budget to purchase repair parts for the city's tub grinder from WHO Manufacturing Company in the amount of $26,875.
Kuzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And item 17 is a consideration of motion to authorize the purchase of a new John Deere Gator TH6 times, six by four vehicle to use for various maintenance projects throughout the city from Proven Power Inc. in the amount of $14,250.91.
Uh, this is kind of getting a jump on the 2017, uh, CEP. Um, actually, this, uh, we kind of scoured through the state contracts, and, uh, uh, this contract is actually piggybacked from Wisconsin, from Virginia, which I believe is given 16% off of manufacturer's suggested retail, which, uh, is a very good deal. Um, and that includes any, uh, any additional parts and, and, uh, accessories that we want to include with it. So, um, I, I don't think we could do better, uh, bidding this out.
Questions? Okay, motion.
Kurkowski make a motion to authorize the purchase of a new John Deere Gator TH6 by four vehicle for use for various maintenance projects throughout the city from Proven Power Inc. In the amount of $14,250.91.
David Chilwell, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Moving on to engineering, loaded engineering agendas. At the end of the year cleanup, Mike? All right, I, I, under engineering, item 18 is a consideration of resolution number 11773-122016, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment to BCF Construction. This project involved the installation of street improvements in Weatherly Drive, project number 14034 in the second district, Mike.
Yes, this is the Weatherly Drive Improvement Project, and this was, uh, in the Willow Heights, uh, neighborhood. Uh, basically, the project, it wa, it was a, a, a very sizable project. Um, had, uh, improvements to the floodway and, uh, basically completed a, a segment of curb roadway, uh, connecting two, um, two completed roadways that had been connected by a, basically an interim road section for, uh, really decades. Uh, this interim road section was subject to, uh, flooding, overtopping, uh, on a fairly frequent basis. Um, big problem with that is that this road was really just the second access point for, for the Willow Heights subdivision. Uh, so in times when you need emergency vehicle access, i.e. big storms, that's a problem. So, uh, had been on the radar for a long time. Uh, finally got it constructed, and included a, a, a big, a nice brig, bridge improvement. Um, uh, so all in all, a, a nice project.
Assuming Alderman Bukavich has some comments.
Um, yeah, as Mike, he covered most of the points. It was an interim road for about 20 some years. Uh, the box culvers were failing already, uh, frequent flooding. Uh, can't say enough, the bridge came out beautifully. Uh, the sidewalks were a great safety improvement, and water management has really been great this summer. Get a chance, please go through there, it's, it's quite an improvement. And again, most of the flooding really inhibited the fire department from access in. And at times, there's also another bridge on Wildwood, it's, that's another subject. But, um, we had a captive subdivision there that they had to go through the apartments in an emergency situation. So, um, greatly improved, uh, great design, thank you.
Motion on 18.
Uh, Bukavich will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11773-122016, accepting the workmanship and authorizing the final payment to BCF Construction. Project involved the installation of street improvements in Weatherly Drive, project number 14034.
Verhalem, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Item 19 is a consideration of resolution number 11774-122016, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment to RLP Diversified. This project involved bluff soil removal improvements in Lake Vista North, project number 14035 in the fourth district, Mike.
This is the, uh, former Peter Cooper property, uh, in particular, the, the eastern portion along the bluff, uh, which is the city-owned portion of that, uh, of the former Peter Cooper site. Uh, this was really phase one of the ultimate improvements that are, um, uh, considered for, for this property. Um, involves, uh, slope stabilization, uh, environmental remediation of the, uh, impacted soils in this former industrial site. Um, including, uh, clean soil capping and, uh, partial, partial capping with a gravel pathway, which eventually will be a, a paved pathway, uh, and then some drainage improvements associated with it. A pretty challenging project. Um, we, we did have some overages on the project, and that had to do with, um, extra, uh, soil excavation that was, uh, that was needed. There was a lot of vegetation that had to be, that was a, it was a, a fairly heavily wooded, um, area, which is basically clear cut now, needed to happen to, uh, to, uh, grade the soils. Um, so, uh, challenging, um, yet, uh, successful project. The, the top, uh, 30 feet of the slope has been pulled back to an acceptable, uh, uh, slope and stabilized, uh, good vegetative cover, whereas previously it was almost vertical and continuing to fall in. Um, so, good project.
Okay, questions? Oh, oh, Alderman Toman.
Are we, uh, in, in the resolution, uh, Mike, at, at, at the bottom of the green page there, it spells out the, uh, terms, uh, for 12 months after acceptance? Is that, are we covered? Is 12 months enough on that or not? Or that's part of the original contract?
Yes, right, yeah, that, that is, uh, that's, that's standard. The standard warranty of once the project is accepted, it starts the 12-month, uh, warranty period.
Okay, so you don't see any, any problems there?
No, not really, no. I, with the, you know, it was mostly grading, and everything grew in nicely on the, on the vegetative cover. We had some storms for improvements, um, associated with the project, so we don't, we don't expect any, any issues out there.
Right, okay.
Anybody else? Don't hear anything. Motion.
I'm going to make a motion to, uh, adopt resolution number 11774, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment to RLP Diversified. This project involved bluff soil removal improvements in Lake Vista, project number 14035.
Kurkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Moving back to item 13, it's a motion to approve the vendor summary report in the amount of $678,425.57. Finance director's here to answer any questions? Any questions?
Richard, sorry, do you have?
Alderman Gale.
I didn't get a chance to touch base before him. Uh, the, uh, nearly 80 grand for Ramble, it represents what kind of timeframe do you recall for their services? Mike, maybe go for that?
Yeah, this, this was for the work that they performed, uh, on the, in preparation for, uh, the park project that's going on now. Uh, there was a, uh, uh, application for what's called a post, post-closure modification, uh, notification, which is, which was actually a, a fairly sizable report, uh, that needed to be compiled and, uh, in the application for the DNR. The modification, of course, is th, this site was remated, remediated with clean soil capping, um, in 2012 into 13.
This has been an ongoing extensive.
Right, exactly, so this, this was in preparation for, to allow us to do the park construction.
And the money we've paid to Edgerton, it, it, we've had limited work there so far, the, uh,
Yes, they've done some storm sewer work, uh, they put in, you know, all the silt fencing. Um, they, they have been, uh, doing, uh, some grading. Um, I think they've been paid, this payment, I believe, you had it for, what, 90,000? About 93,000, I think they had one, one, uh, smaller payment previously, which is really a fraction of the, of the $4 million contract that they have.
Anybody else? Motion.
Gale, most approved vendor summary report in amount of $678,425.57.
Kurkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Item 20 is a consideration of resolution number 11776-122016, accepting dedication of the public improvements and release for Drexel Town Square, project numbers 13050 and 13051. Mike?
Okay, uh, thank you, man. This is, uh, really all the, all the infrastructure, the, the grading, the roads, the sewers, water mains, street lighting, and all the, the very extensive wetland park, uh, improvements.
Sorry, Andrew and I just met with West Park, um, earlier this week, actually, and we're receiving our final draw request on the 22 million and change for the infrastructure to release this. We'll get that the first week of January, helping to close out.
Questions? Alderman Bukavich.
Just a comment, I see there's no outstanding assessments, nothing that's going to come back like two years from now, final lifts, anything like that. We're all okay.
Much cleaner process now.
I have nothing on my record.
Okay, yeah, I would imagine this one's a little bit cleaner, but, uh, just, it is in the report, and I just wanted to make note of that.
Nothing else, motion on 20.
Uh, Bukavich will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11776-122016, accepting dedication of the public improvements and the release for Drexel Town Square Projects, number 13050 and 13051.
Kurkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
And our last item on under engineering is item 21. It's a consideration of resolution number 11777-122016, authorizing a contract extension and addendum to the city of Oak Creek contract specifications for 2015, 2016 private property maintenance projects, Mike.
Uh, this is a mutually agreed upon, um, uh, extension, uh, with the contract with Robbie's grading for the, uh, private property maintenance projects. And, um, have had this in place generally since 2010. Uh, I think we've utilized it, uh, once or twice really only. Um, but there is value in having a contractor on hand to, uh, uh, respond, uh, to, uh, the, the many cases we have out there. So, um, contractor was amenable to renewing for one year. Um, Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we entered into the contract again last year, and we can have up to three one-year extensions. So this will be the first of those three, so.
Okay. Any questions? Motion.
Gale, move to approve resolution 11777-122016, authorizing a contract extension and addendum to the city of Oak Creek contract specifications for the 2015, 16 private property maintenance projects.
Kurkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Captain.
Toman.
Aye.
Licensing, item 22, we'll hand it off to, uh, Alderman Kurkowski.
License committee met on December 15th, the minutes are attached, our recommendations are as follows. Uh, item 22, Kurkowski make a motion to grant an operator's license to Ma Schinder Bearing 3612 Willow Lane, South Milwaukee.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
23.
Kurkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the 20 individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable background reports were received.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
24.
Kurkowski make a motion to grant a temporary Class B beer license to Roland Komorowski, agent on behalf of St. Matthew's Parish, 9303 South Chicago Road, for a St. Matthew Parish Holy Name Society event to be held on February 24th, 2017.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
25.
Kurkowski make a motion to grant a change of agent to Loves Travel Stops and Country Stores, 9650 South 20th Street, from Charles Campbell to Paul Justice, 3827 East Edgerton Avenue, Cudahy. Favorable, favorable background report received.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
26.
Kurkowski make a motion to grant a renewal adult entertainment business license for the 2017 licensing year to SJB LLC, Stephanie Higgins, Agent DBA, the New Spice 2, 7070 South 27th Street, with issuance subject to payment of 2016 personal property taxes and departmental inspections approvals.
Gale, second.
Gale, second. Uh, question for somebody, the, the property currently is unplowed, and there's no access due to the massive drifts from the plows on 27th Street. Any idea what's going on there?
The only thing that I can add to that is we have been, as part of our normal quarterly own conversations with the DOT, we did ask them about the status of that property. They said that, that really remains unchanged, that they're working towards the, uh, they already, obviously already own the property, but they're working through the legal process of relocating that tenant potentially. And they said the process is moving along, although not as quickly as they, and undoubtedly the city, uh, is looking for, but the process is still moving along.
You have something to say? Um, okay, thanks for the information. Roll call.
Just quick, is it open for business?
It wasn't today, but, um, it's kind of outside the scope, so.
Well, no, if it's not plowed though, I, I.
I get it, I probably shouldn't have interjected my comment, but for the purpose of licensing, that's what we're here for, so. Uh, roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
All right, 27.
Kurkowski make a motion to grant an employee license for the 2017 licensing year for the New Spice 2 to Mary Stott, 6123 E, South 37th Street, Greenfield. Favorable background report received.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Under miscellaneous, item 28 is a consideration of a motion to convene in the closed session immediately following the conclusion of the common council meeting pursuant to Wisconsin State statute to discuss the following. A, section 19.185, let me read that again, section 19.851G, to consider a proposed settlement agreement and release of claim related to a notice of claim filed by Terry R. Meyer regarding an injury sustained at the Oak Creek Recycling Center on May 28, 2016. B, section 19.851E to discuss the terms of your proposed development agreement, including a TIF incentive grant for property owned by Woodman's Food Market, Inc., consisting, consisting of approximately four acres located at 8142 South 6th Street. Alderman Gale.